Liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. May I have approval of minutes from the meeting held March 13th, 2017?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. They're approved. Is there anybody that wants to address? May I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Good news report. Doug Morrison.
Thank you. Well, Deanne just wanted me to give an update. We had a great event on Saturday night. The Sioux Falls Storm hosted an evening in basically in honor of the Sioux Falls School District and had done some fundraising. So it was neat to see. They had all types of things. They had a silent auction. They had a raffle. Actually, I think Burnside Bingo had made a significant contribution, almost $6,000, I think. And so it was a great night. We had Wilson. If you remember Wilson from opening night, he was there at halftime speaking. And so it was just a great night, a lot of exposure for the Sioux Falls School District. And I guess what? I was also most proud to see so many of our administrators at the game helping out and volunteering. So whether it was helping with the silent auction or selling raffle tickets or whatever, it was really terrific. So Jim Loria, who is in charge of sales for the Storm, did an outstanding job with working with Deanne to kind of put this together. So didn't know how much money we were going to raise, but in the end, what we were presented or what I was presented for at the beginning of the fourth quarter was a check for $27,150.
Wow, awesome.
Very significant. And that will go to help some of our title schools that don't have some of the fundraising efforts happening in those schools at some of the other ones. And I think this will really go a long way to help. And Jim hopes to make this an annual event. And it actually is in hopes that we can maybe double this amount next year by involving some more partners and stuff. So hopefully down the road, we can get Jim in here in the Storm and thank them. But wanted to get this out to the board as it may hit the media at some point if it hasn't already. So that would be the good news report.
Thanks. And thanks for going, Doug.
I think that's a good example of the district working together with community partners and really having them buy into our mission and our vision. And like Doug mentioned, these are going to go to some of our higher need schools, the ones that maybe don't have a PTO or a PTA or that strong parent support. And so this will really make a difference to the number of schools that that money goes to on just small things that other buildings are able to easily get with their parent support that these maybe struggle to get those. So a great event. Thank you to the Storm and all the business partners and all the community members who came out to support that as well.
Great. All right. Do we have any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. We'll move forward. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. May I have a motion for supplement consent agenda 11A claims to Sanford Healthcare?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries with an abstention from Carly Ryder. Motion to approve claims 11B to Avera Healthcare.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries with an abstention from Board Member Parker. And to you, Dr. Maher.
All right. We'll have three reports tonight for you to receive. The first one is an assessment report that we're looking at regarding the measurement of academic progress. And here to speak to that is Demi Moon. Dr. Moon?
Good evening. The 2016-17 school year has marked the pilot year for the district with the NWEA MAP Assessment. With any pilot project, we usually enter into those because we're searching for answers to something. The question specifically that we have been searching for answers or the tool that we have been searching to use in order to help us answer questions are these three questions. What is our student's current instructional level? Where are the students ready to learn? How is the student growing academically? How are we able to measure their growth in the classroom? And what are the students' specific skills, strengths, and their gaps in their learning? And so with those questions in front of us, we set forth into this partnership with NWEA and entered into this pilot project. Why the MAP specifically? There are three main areas that the MAP has helped us to achieve goals or to really focus in on. The first one is to consolidate current assessment practices. Prior to this year, there were a whole variety of assessments and still are in many grade levels, a variety of assessments being given in the classroom. With that variety of assessments comes a variety of reporting forms, a variety of administration styles, and a variety of time commitments. So in order to get all of that same information from one assessment, we are able to consolidate the amount of time that teachers spend in the classroom giving those assessments and hopefully return some of that time back to the teachers. Jamie Knold is going to expand on that a little bit in his board report following mine, so I'll leave that for him to kind of elaborate on this evening. The second area is to assist in the appropriate student placement. A lot of times, we're looking for those students that need different interventions. We're looking for the students who would benefit from accelerated coursework. And we're also looking to identify students who might possibly be gifted and talented and get them into programs that would help them accelerate their learning as well. And so using an assessment or having an assessment at our disposal that would help us put those students in those appropriate programs is beneficial as well. And the third reason for choosing the MAP is really the immediate feedback. When students sit down to take this assessment, the minute that they are done, both the students, the teachers, the instructional leaders, the instructional coaches, and district administration all have immediate feedback from those students' results and the student assessment. This is not a quote that has come from one of our teachers, but a teacher who uses the MAP in her classroom. But I do hope that it is the sentiment that is shared with a lot of our teachers in the district right now. Before using the MAP, we were missing the full picture of how to teach kids who were gifted and talented or struggling to learn or were English language learners. But now we know what our students are ready to learn before we even begin teaching them. We weren't expecting to see such consistent major growth for our students across the board. And I would say that from the teachers and the administrators that have worked with this pilot project this year, that is the sentiment that I hear quite a bit from those teachers and from the administration. Well, at this point, you're probably asking, what exactly is the NWEA MAP? And so I'll explain that just a little bit more. NWEA stands for Northwest Evaluation Association, and it is the company that produces the MAP Assessment. The MAP Assessment stands for Measures of Academic Progress. It tests grade level content skills in the areas of reading, language usage, math, and even science. That is used starting in grades three all the way through high school if desired. For those students of ours that are in grades K through two, there is a primary grade version of the MAP called the MPG or MAP for Primary Grades. This assessment focuses more on early literacy and early numeracy skills and helps us identify where our students are at in those earlier years. This test or this assessment only focuses on the content areas of math and reading. The MAP Assessment is a computer-administered test. It is also a computer adaptive assessment. And what that means is when a student sits down, they log in and they begin with a question. If they get that question wrong, the assessment adjusts and gives them another question, maybe at a little bit lower content level. If they get that question right, it then challenges them with a little bit harder question. And when students are all said and done with the assessment, each time that they sit down, they are scheduled to, by the design of the assessment, to get about 50% of the questions incorrect and the other 50% correct. This process of adapting to the answers of the students when the students answer the questions is really how the assessment identifies exactly what the students are at for a learning level and what skills and the content that they're ready to learn. Students receive scores in terms of Roush units or RIT scores. The RIT score has also taken on and the acronym RIT has also taken on a new meaning amongst the users of the NWEA MAP across the United States. And they have sort of attached "Ready for Instruction Today" to that acronym. And that really does describe what the Roush unit tells us, which is exactly where our students are at in their learning and what skills they're actually prepared to learn based on how they did on the assessment. How are we currently using it in the Sioux Falls School District? Well, right now, we're giving it to all of our fifth graders, that's the pilot project, across the district. And we're using it this year in place of the Iowa Test of Basic Skills, which we have given for the last few years in the fifth grade. The test is administered three times throughout the year, both in the fall, the winter, and then again in the spring. We are also using it in our three focus schools this year to help measure the effectiveness of those schools' school improvement plan and the strategies that they are using. The other reason that we're giving it in the three focus schools is because we're using it to help measure the growth of those students that are involved in the summer climb program in those three schools. And then we will also, since we use it this year, since we are giving it to the fifth graders across the district, we will use it as students enter sixth grade this summer to help place them into appropriate coursework based on the results of their MAP test. One of the reasons that we have added the science halfway through this pilot project is because this fall, we were notified by the Department of Ed that as they transition into the new South Dakota Science Assessment, we will not be getting individual science scores this year from that assessment and probably next year as well. And so without that data on our students with science, that left us as the district really looking for some more information on how our students are doing with science, and the MAP was able to fill that gap. Some of the benefits of the MAP, in a minute, I'm going to show you a report. It really can be used to help us predict college and career readiness, both on the Smarter Balance Assessment and on the ACT. And they have a alignment, a linkage study that they did and an alignment chart that helps us show how students, even at the younger grades, how their individual RIT scores align to how they might do or be predicted to perform on those two assessments later on. It helps us to differentiate instruction, all of the different reports that are given, whether they be student progress, class performance, class breakdown reports. Those all help the teachers be able to put students into groups that are alike in their ability and their readiness to learn different content, and that allows teachers to differentiate their instruction. It also helps us reduce the current district required assessments, which, like I said earlier, Jamie Knold is going to expand on shortly. And it really helps with student goal setting. Having those students be able to be involved in their assessment multiple times throughout the year, set their own growth goals so that they can really look at their data and find out where they are currently achieving and where they might want to achieve, students have really taken a greater involvement in their own assessment and in their own data and their goal setting this year. The chart in front of you right now is a combination of a chart that allows us to see exactly where our students are performing within the norms in the fall. And it also helps us align to those prediction values that I was talking about earlier. The bottom of the chart takes the different percentile rankings. If you look at the blue line all the way across the middle, that identifies where the 50th percentile is for each grade level. And this particular chart is for mathematics. And then it branches that out both upward and downward, a half a standard deviation at a time. So it allows us to kind of get an idea of where the spread of that data is. Up at the top, you can see that for spring results under those same grade levels, the results of that linkage study where they take and they identify where students are on a trajectory to perform either on the Smarter Balance or on their ACT. And so you can see that students that consistently perform in the 61st to 74th percentile are on a trajectory to score a 22 or higher on that subject test on the ACT. Similarly, students that are in the range of a 70th or higher percentile over the years in the math portion of their NWEA MAP Assessment are also more likely to score a 24 or higher on their ACT. So this really does, starting in fifth grade, give parents an idea of where their children are headed as far as those later assessments that really have a lot of scholarship dollars tied to them and help with our entrance into college. The top line shows you how our students are expected to perform on the Smarter Balance Assessment. And we consider a level three or four, so a level three or higher proficient. And so if you look over to the right, that is saying that students in the 52nd to 72nd percentile are more likely to score proficient on the Smarter Balance. And so we don't even really necessarily say that we want kids to be at that 50th percentile. We really want them to be even higher than that to ensure that they are ready to be proficient on the Smarter Balance Assessment. This is an example of a student report. If you have a fifth grader in the district this year and you've gone to conferences, you have received a copy of this report after both the fall and the winter assessment. This report shows you how your individual student will do or has performed, how they perform compared to the district mean, and how they perform against the national norms. It also gives them a projection for how they need to score by the end of the year in order to maintain their percentile growth. If they would like to grow that percentile or make gains in their academic achievement, they're going to have to exceed that goal that has been set there. The box over on the right, even though it's kind of hard to see, that tells the parents over history or over the course of time that they've been in our district, how have they continued to perform. So it really does focus that mindset on growth and giving both the RIT score and the percentile ranking over that course of time. It really allows you to see if your students have made growth as they have gone through the system. This is an example of a teacher report. When the teachers log in and they look at their students, their class as a whole, this report actually takes their students and groups them by RIT ranges. And those RIT ranges are linked to content skills that those students are ready to learn, not skills that they have already mastered, but skills that they are determined ready to be instructed on. And so that really comes into play with the teacher differentiation with the instruction and allows teachers to put students into like groups so that they're learning with their peers that are also ready to learn those same skills. Professional development has been offered this year in our pilot project. We have had three days of onsite training for teachers, for coaches, instructional coaches, and principals. We have had frequent webinar offerings that come directly to any of the teachers and the administrators that have an account with our NWEA MAP. They get frequent webinar offerings, and those webinars have proven to be very informational. There's a whole wealth of online print resources. Those resources provide guidance for using and for preparing the report so that teachers know exactly what kind of report they want, so they get the correct information. There are parent communication tools provided so that the district doesn't have to create all of that communication, and that really helps with making sure parents are provided with the information needed to learn how to read those reports. And then there's also a wealth of different options and templates out there for teachers to use with their students as they help their students set their own goals as they continue through the MAP process. Going back to the questions that we had at the beginning about how can we consolidate our assessments, how can we measure growth over time for our students, and how can we be really sure that we are teaching the skills in the different content areas that our students are ready to learn? And so consequently, how can we differentiate that instruction around our classroom when our students are not all at that same spot at the same time? We really do recommend, as the result of this pilot project, that this NWEA MAP Assessment be expanded to grades K through six, with grades K through two using the MPG and grades three through six using the MAP. This will allow us to monitor the growth of our students over a course of time. This is not intended to be a snapshot assessment. It really is just like measuring your height over the years when you're growing up. It really is intended to be a progression tool. And so having that continuation as students enter our system in grade kindergarten and then watching them grow over those years, that will really help us to identify where those achievement gaps are and hopefully use that to close those gaps with the identified skills. And that recommendation for expansion will come through the budget process. And so at this time, I would answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Demi?
Do you have any feedback from teachers on how they feel? Like, does it help them to target their instruction? Do you have any specific things that have been shared with you?
I would say in the focus schools where they have been able to really dive into this as an entire staff, everybody has access, everybody has classroom data K through five, there has probably been a greater focus on using it and using it in collaboration. And so those responses have been very good from the three focus schools. They started this last spring, getting ready for that summer climb identification and then watching their summer climb students' growth over that course of time. However, even within the fifth grade classrooms and the teachers that we have talked to, the instructional coaches that have helped teachers use those reports, they would tell you it is new, it is a lot of information. But one of the things that's really nice is as they move from math to reading to the grammar and the language usage and the science even, they're able to speak the same language, they're able to log into the same portal and pull the reports in the same manner, and able to talk to their peers within their building or across the district, and they're all able to speak that common language. And so that part of it has been nice. It's a learning curve. And so the professional development is important. But every time they get a new piece or have a new discovery, they really do, from the feedback that I have received, they really do appreciate the information that it has provided them about their students.
And so then, just from my understanding, when we say expand, we're going to have the focus schools, or really, we're going to apply that same philosophy to every school, every elementary school going forward. So then there will be more of that community language amongst the entire school instead of just the fifth grade right now.
Right. And then even into the sixth grade, our fifth graders then would have two years of data as they, you know, move into sixth grade next year. And that would help us, help the middle school teachers and administration as those students come into their building for that first year, help them get more information on them rather than waiting until the end of the year with the Smarter Balance. It's just a couple more checkpoints for them to make sure that as they move forward then into the seventh grade and really get into those differentiation areas that we've got students placed in courses and in classrooms where they are able to learn at an adequate rate. And it's really the instruction matches where they're at with their learning. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to acknowledge the update on the pilot of the NWEA MAP Assessment?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that carries.
Thank you.
Our next report comes from Assistant Superintendent Knold. He'll be talking to us about our K-5 instructional day and some research we've done in that regard.
Good evening. She put a little pressure on me there to answer a few of those questions now, and I will try to do that as we go through. First of all, this is the K-5 Teachers' Instructional Day study that we've gone through. And this hits under the area of district staff, which is priority area number three. Specifically, it's to evaluate the requirements of the K-5 Elementary Teachers' Instructional Day. During the 2015-2016 school year, Dr. Maher and Deanne Conrad held multiple work groups or sessions where they talked to different groups and had feedback sessions with those groups throughout the entire Sioux Falls School District staff. One of those specific groups was our elementary teachers. And some of the comments and concerns that were brought about in that discussion necessitated some further discussion. And so this past year, during the 16-17 school year, we'd invited four groups of eight teachers in each group to meet with us, Dr. Maher, Sue Macadera, Brenda Bernard, and myself, and talked through those 32 teachers, what are some things we can do in the Sioux Falls School District for change in a positive way for that elementary instructional day. Following up on that, Sue Macadera and myself then met with the elementary principals in two separate meetings to take through that list of concerns that came from our discussion and feedback sessions with those teachers and to talk through those elementary principals, what are some changes we could do for the positive for those elementary schools and school teachers specifically. So the following information that I will go through are some of the top things that we came through with, the changes that we can implement during the 17-18 school year. The first and the biggest topic that came up quite often was assessments. Assessments were one of the areas that required a significant amount of time for the teachers, especially at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, which are two of the most difficult times of the year. Often, those assessments were one-to-one assessments and took up multiple time for each individual student, let alone the entire class. We did look at, as was just presented to you, the Measures of Academic Progress or the MAP Assessment. And so I won't go through the detail of the MAP Assessment, but with the use of the MAP Assessment, there's multiple areas that we can reduce or diminish the amount of time required in those classrooms, especially in the area of assessment. So I'll highlight a few of those, and especially the first one here, I'll give you a little bit of an idea as to what time we would save with that. So what can be altered to save time by using the MAP Assessment? First of all, the developmental reading assessment, the DRA. Just to put that in context, the DRA is usually administered two times, kindergarten through fifth grade, so each of those grade levels. In each year that it is given, it requires an increased amount of time. So at the kindergarten level, it usually takes about five to 10 minutes, usually 10 minutes at the maximum end, per student, and it's given twice a year. And that's an individual test that is given to each one of those students. So they meet face-to-face, one-to-one. At the fifth grade level, it can take up to 40 minutes per student. Some of that time will be a little bit of independent work as they're working independently, but a lot of that time is a teacher required to give information to that individual student in a one-to-one basis. So you can see just on the DRA in and of itself, with being five to 10 minutes per kindergarten student and up to 40 minutes per fifth grade student, and it's given at each one of those levels, the amount of significant time that could save. We will no longer be required for all students with the DRA. The test may be needed, though, for a few small groups of students to get some other background information to help those individual students or where it's required with a literacy grant. The second area that can be considerably save time is the word analysis assessment. This will no longer be required for all students, but the test may again be needed for some individual students on a one-to-one basis or small groups of students. It may also be required in a few schools for the literacy grant. The third one would be the RI or Reading Inventory or the Phonics Inventory, the PI, which would be predominantly eliminated throughout all elementary schools. The Pearson Online Assessment will reduce the assessment length for the students, will also provide the paper copy so that those individual teachers do not need to wait for the technology, so that will aid them in time that way. So those teachers will have that option. They'll give the paper or the online version. And the final area would be the ADD plus Vantage Math Recovery or the ABMR, which will no longer be required for all students. The test may be needed at times for select individual students or small groups of students. So the first area that we really looked at to be able to save time within that instructional day of the kindergarten through fifth grade is assessments. A lot of that information was presented with the MAP, but those are five distinct areas that we'd be able to save time for those teachers. The second area that we looked at was report cards. Another significant area that teachers brought back information was on the report cards, the length of time it took to fill out and fill in each one of those standards for the report cards. So a meeting with the teachers and with the elementary principals, we're able to come alongside those with the report cards and reduce many of the areas in there that they would need to do. The MAP would be able to benefit in that as well as it gives feedback to not only the teacher but to the parents. Meetings. Meetings were another significant area that we talked about with those elementary teachers. The meetings discussed included, but we're not limited to, collaboration time, team meetings, staff meetings, professional development meetings, data meetings, or any other meeting that is required for the staff at the elementary level. This area is going to be addressed through the negotiated agreement. And so that part will be coming out in the near future as far as the alteration in the meetings to be able to benefit our elementary teachers and give back time to them. The fourth area and the final area that is one of the implemented changes for next year to save our elementary teachers' time is departmentalization. Schools will have the freedom for staff to request and/or principals to utilize departmentalization to reduce the number of to reduce the number of preps at the elementary level. What that would be, for example, could be two fifth grade teachers. One of them may have a class of 24 or 25 students, and they would prepare the science lesson, where their co-teacher may prepare the social studies lesson. And they would just swap students at some point in time through that day or that week. So they'd be preparing less or fewer lessons throughout the week. So that's part of the departmentalization. Some schools are using that program right now or piloting that program right now and have found some success, especially in that fourth and fifth grade level. So that'd be another area that they could use. In summary, each of the above recommended changes will be intended for the 17-18 school year for implementation. Administrative recommendation for the school board to acknowledge the progress of the K-5 Instructional Day study. I'd stand by for any questions you would have.
Any questions for Jamie? Hearing none, I need a motion to acknowledge the progress of the K-5 Instructional Day study. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I know this has been a hot topic for teachers, so it's interesting to see what some of the specific feedback and specific actions that are being taken in regards to that, and I hope that, I hope that they feel heard and are excited about some of these changes. And, you know, I think some of it might take a little bit of shifting, I think, about my own kids, and, you know, they know what their DRA level is, so they can go to the library and pick out a book that's at their level. And so, you know, teachers will have to figure out how to direct students in that way, which I'm confident that they'll be able to do. I think it'd just be a mind shift for maybe the students and the teachers to understand, you know, my goal for the end of the year is this and I'm at this. They'll have a different way of measuring that, and that MAP will help with that too, I'm sure. But, yeah, I hope that, I hope that they feel heard and they feel valued, because I think that's all, I know with Dr. Maher and all of us, we really, we want to make that, we understand that that is a challenge. And so I hope that they see that this is maybe the first of many steps to address that and try to make that work environment and that schedule even better for them.
Yeah, I'm grateful for that. I've heard a few people in the effort on the report card. That's a great thing, so I too hope they feel heard, we're listening. Any further discussion? A motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries. Thanks, Jamie.
I think we let him off too easy without any questions, so I'm going to ask him to give another report.
I even have backup here, just in case there's a hard one that came.
We've been working on cultural responsiveness as part of our strategic plan, and Mr. Knoll has been working on that incredibly hard, so he's here to give us a report.
This report, the purpose of the report is to update the board on the progress of initiatives within the strategic plan to enhance cultural responsiveness and the diversity of the teaching workforce. There's two really reports back here in one. The one is the school culture and climate, the second one is with our district staff. And so with our school culture and climate, it was develop strategies to enhance the culturally responsive workforce. And as far as our district staff, we'll help develop strategies to enhance the quality and diversity of our workforce. So the explanation of this, the Sioux Falls School District recognizes that over the past 25 years, our diversity of our student population has changed significantly. It went from 25 years ago being at about 94% Caucasian to now being at about 64% Caucasian over that 25-year period. In that, we have worked with the first area, which is culturally responsive practices. Culturally responsive teaching is a pedagogy that recognizes the importance of including students' cultural references in all aspects of learning. Acknowledging, responding to and celebrating fundamental cultures offers full equitable access to education for students from all cultures. So we started here in August of 2016. We met with Dr. Donald Eastern Brooks, who is the Chair of the Education Department down at the University of South Dakota, and just began the dialogue of what would that look like in the Sioux Falls School District to be more culturally responsive in comparison to our student makeup? We continued that in January of 2017 with the University of South Dakota administrators, where we developed a think tank. We included administrators from the district level, administrators from the building level, in meeting with USD professors, Dr. Derek Robinson, who is also part of the Education Department down there, and Dr. Nicholas Shudak. And in that think tank, we went through and just discussed the beginning conversations of what would it look like if we wanted an impact in our schools to make sure that we remained effectively culturally responsive for our students? What would that be? So we're in the beginning stages of that. This summer, we do plan to, that group of individuals plans to attend the June 2017 Diversity Conference, so that as we continue to move forward, we can make a systemic plan for our schools to make sure that we maintain our culturally responsive climate within our schools. So we're in the beginning phases of many of that. University of South Dakota, as you had heard, has come alongside us with many of their educational professors to help us work through that process so that we can lay out a plan for all Sioux Falls School District workforce and employees in our schools. So that's the first step of what we're trying to do as far as the cultural responsiveness. The second part is the diversity in our workforce. This will be broken down into a couple areas. First of all, it's to recruit a more diverse teaching workforce, because as I said earlier, over the 25 years, we went from the 94% Caucasian in our student population to a 64% Caucasian to current date here, so over that 24-year period. At the same time, our teaching staff was 98% Caucasian 25 years ago and still maintains at about 98% Caucasian at this time. So we really looked at two areas that we could grow the diversity of our work staff. The first one is a Grow Your Own program. About 60% of all teachers that teach in a school district grew up within about 20 miles of that school district. So knowing that information, we worked again alongside individuals like Dr. Eastern Brooks and Dr. Robinson and Dr. Shudak to look at what would it be or what would it take with the Sioux Falls School District to create a Sioux Falls School District teacher pathway? So individual students, because obviously if we have the diversity within our student population, how do we help translate that into our teacher population? So we've talked to them multiple times as far as the Sioux Falls School District teacher pathway at the start of the 2016-17 school year. We also worked closely with Dr. Eastern Brooks and talked with them about Eastern Oregon that has also, Eastern Oregon University that has also started a program there with their local schools. So this next month in April, the University of South Dakota is going to have a couple individuals from Eastern Oregon come out to meet with the school district here just to talk about what a Sioux Falls School District teacher pathway would look like. Hopefully, we'd be able to take that plan and possibly put it into action during the 2018-2019 school year in each one of our high schools. In the meantime, though, we went out to each one of the high schools, Washington, Lincoln and Roosevelt, so the three traditional high schools, and Becky Dorman and I met with individual students of diverse backgrounds at each one of those high schools. There's about 46 students that we've met with during the months of November and December of 2016. We then asked those students, presented the information about potentially being a teacher, a teacher for the Sioux Falls School District. We asked how many would be interested in hearing more about the teaching profession. So we went back in February of 2017 along with Dr. Maher and individuals from the University of South Dakota that included Dr. Eastern Brooks and Dr. Robinson and Dr. Shudak, and talked to 26 students then at those three schools, and talked to them more about potentially going into a career of education. Becky Dorman then set up job shadow experiences or is setting up job shadow experiences for those individual students where they can go to an elementary building or a middle school building and shadow a teacher for part of a day so they can have a little bit of an experience of what that may look like. Some of those will also shadow someone in the high school. And then this next month, at the end of April, we will take a group of students, and right now there's 24 students that are signed up, we'll go down to the USD campus and tour their educational facility down there and the campus itself, have them meet with a few of the educational professors to talk through that. They've openly said they don't care which college they go to, they just hope that they go to a college and into a career possibly of education. So it'll be specifically education students that they will meet with and talk with and be able to ask questions of, and the professors from the University of South Dakota. So that's some of the things we are doing until we can possibly get a Grow Your Own program with a teacher pathway in the Sioux Falls School District. The second thing that we're looking at, which is our second program in that area, is a potential teacher internship program. Different individuals from our community or even within our Sioux Falls School District that may have a four-year degree have talked to us about potentially going into the field of teaching. Sometimes there's a little bit of hesitation because they would have to give up the current job or income that they're at, plus they truly don't know or understand what a career in education may look like. So this next year, we will be offering five paid internship positions as part of a pilot program with the Sioux Falls School District. So during the 17-18 school district year, we will be able to have those individuals apply for and be placed with teachers throughout the school district at the elementary, middle school or high school level, whoever is accepted. Obviously, our hope would be to have some of our hard-to-fill areas, math, science, special education, and possibly individuals of diverse backgrounds would be able to apply for those positions as well. That would give them a chance to have a nine-week internship alongside a teacher to see what the field of teaching is like. Potentially, then they could go back and receive their masters and become certified to be a teacher. So that is a pilot program that we will start this next year for potential teacher interns. In summary, the Sioux Falls School District is committed to building a culture that is responsive and inclusive of all students. Toward that goal, teams are studying and researching models to deliver information to all Sioux Falls School District workforce members. In addition, the process of increasing diversity of teachers is in the beginning stages with two program options. The administrative recommendation to the school board would be to acknowledge the progress toward exploring a model to expand staff awareness of culturally responsive practices and program strategies to expand the diversity of our teaching workforce. I would stand by for questions.
Any questions for Jamie? Great stuff.
I love the idea of the teacher internship program. How will you advertise that or what's, do you have a certain pool of people in mind?
At the start of this month, we will put it out on the website so people can see it there. There's an application form that they would fill out. It'll also be sent out to all of our EAs, behavior specialists within the Sioux Falls School District, because there's several of those that do have four-year degrees that do not have their teacher certification and have been working in other capacities. So it'll be made public through our website, and then it'll also be sent out throughout our district.
Have you, and maybe this isn't a great pool, but I'm thinking of even like the substitute teacher pool.
Absolutely.
Where some of those people don't have teaching degrees, right? They just have a four-year degree, so they're qualified. There might be people who could benefit, I don't know.
Absolutely. We can look at that group as well because we'd have their email addresses as well, obviously.
I think both pieces of the plan sound really interesting, and I think if I were a high school student and somebody approached me and said, "I want you to learn more about being a teacher," and you offered me the opportunity to go to a university and do all those things, I would feel really valued and that somebody was really taking an interest in what, that they thought what my talents were. And so I hope that those types of outreach to these students really does make a difference and maybe give somebody some hope they didn't have before or a dream that they didn't even know that's something that they could achieve. And it would be great to have those people come back and teach in our district too, so good work.
There's so many high school students that don't know what they're doing or where they're going, and this would be a great, great opportunity.
I see it almost another pathway, you know? I mean, it just gives them that opportunity to learn about another, you know, another career. I mean, we have got the, we've got the great things that are happening at CTE to help kids, show kids what they could possibly do after high school. And this is, to me, just another one of those pathways, and I'm really excited about it.
So many of the kids have said they've just never been asked.
Yep.
And that's a big step in forward is just hearing from people, and I know it meant a lot to them to have the professors there, Dr. Maher there, and just present to them what it means to be a teacher. And Becky and I took them through a little bit of a trivial pursuit of teaching, so it was good. And they were surprised, and many of them outstanding students in AP classes and doing great things, they've just never been asked.
Great.
Well, I think too, both this report and the K-5 Teacher Instruction Day are in part the result of all of the work that went into the strategic planning process. And as we've said, we did invest in that, and that wasn't going to be something that sat on the shelf and didn't get used. And to me, this is proof of that investment being put to work and benefit to our students and to our staff. So, good stuff. Thanks.
Any further questions? I need a motion to acknowledge the progress towards exploring a model to expand staff awareness, culturally responsive practices and program strategies to expand the diversity of our teaching workforce. So moved. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This evening, we are going to attend the Teacher of the Year reception at seven o'clock. If there's anything else, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion adjourned, or meeting adjourned.